We are going live right now. I've already been recording, but that's all right because I can change that. So I'm going to admit.
Let everybody in.
Yeah, okay.
And we'll get started, right? All right, welcome everyone. We're just going to give everyone a chance to to get into the meeting. Great. This is the Town Associate Select Board and Advisory Board Joint Meeting in advance of our town meeting. And before we launch the meeting, we're going to get the housekeeping taken care of. And first, I want to state that in response to Governor Baker's Declaration of Public Health Emergency and Related Emergency Executive Order dated March 12, 2020, the Town of Situate Public Meetings shall meet remotely until further notice. This meeting is being recorded and is being viewed live on Situate Community Television Facebook. The recorded meeting will be available after we conclude on Channel 9 and also on the Situate Community Television YouTube channel. So to call this meeting to order, we will have to do, it has to be a little clunky, we will call the Board of Selectmen to order first, and then Advisory will do the same. So I'm looking to my board for a motion to accept the agenda and begin the meeting. Moved by Mrs. Miss Karen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Conley. And as we're remote, all votes have to be on roll call.
Ms. Canfield.
Yes.
Mr. Vignani.
He waved his hand.
Oh, he did. Okay.
Now I can unmute. Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
Um, Ms. Conley.
Yes.
Ms. Karen.
Yes.
Mr. Goodrich.
I think we are still pending Mr. Goodrich. So the motion carries four zero to accept the agenda. I would like to ask Mr. Kelly, who's in a box somewhere in my screen, to call his meeting to to order.
Okay, well, thank you, and welcome to the, I guess, the initial by-town charter joint meeting of the select people and the Advisory Committee. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to review the articles, hopefully at a high level for the ATM and STM. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as written?
Don't move.
So Jamie Gilmore makes the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Dan McGuigan, second. Okay, can we take a roll call vote? Lorraine, do you want me to take it or do you want?
That's okay, I can do it. Mr. Gilmore.
Aye.
Mr. Westward.
Absent.
He's here.
Okay.
Oh, there he is.
Mr. Westward.
Yeah, I may, I, they, I was muted for some reason. They wouldn't let me unmute.
Okay, Mr. Heineman.
Aye.
Mr. McQuiggin.
Aye.
Ms. Metro.
Yes.
Ms. Ferguson.
Yes.
Ms. Seidel, I know is not on the call. Ms. Russo.
I haven't seen her on the call yet.
Okay, and Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
I didn't get the count, but the motion does get, oh, sorry, you can say that part. Sorry, Mr. Kelly.
Well, the motion carries unanimously.
Seven.
Eight to one, uh, seven to one, pardon me.
Seven, zero.
Seven, zero.
Great. All right, thank you. As Mr. Kelly said, we want to thank you all for joining us this evening. It was beautiful this evening. The form is intended to provide an informal overview of the proposed fiscal '22 budget for the town before we come together at town meeting on April 12th. And what will happen is our town administrator will give a short presentation on the process, on sort of the process of budget development and the elements that will be before everyone for town meeting for a vote. There will be time for questions after his presentation. And then after his budget presentation, we will present a short overview of the remaining articles that will be before town meeting and open it up to questions. This form is not intended to take place of the important town meeting floor debates, but to give residents an opportunity to preview the issues that will be coming up for that debate. And I know I'm looking forward to a lively conversation. Before we begin, let me enter, I want to introduce my board members and invite Mr. Kelly to invite and introduce his members. And just a little housekeeping, when we do get to the question and answer period, there will, we'll, we'll go through like normal Zoom. I think everyone's pretty familiar now. We'll just do the raise hand function or put your video on so that we can call on you, just like we would have, we were all in a room together. And also, I do want to note that the last article on the warrant is a citizen's petition, and the petitioner has, is going to try to juggle her restaurant duties with answering questions. So if you, if you, when we get to that point and you think that's something you're going to want to discuss, I'll again revisit it so we can call her off of the the line and have her come and answer the questions. So with that, I would be, I would like to introduce my board. They consist of, or I should say the select board, it's not my board, Vice Chairman Tony Vignani over there, Mara Curran, Karen Connolly, and I don't believe Mr. Goodrich has has joined us yet, but he shall. And with that, Mr. Kelly, would you like to introduce your board?
Sure. My name is Jerry Kelly, and joining me tonight are the Vice Chair of the Advisory Committee, Mike Westward, Lincoln Heineman, whom everybody knows, Jamie Gilmore, Linda Ferguson, Patrice Metro, Dan McGuigan, and in extension are Missy Seidel, who's selling a house tomorrow, and Elise Russo, who I think is learning Italian.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, everybody for making the time to do this. I think it's important for for the residents to have this opportunity. So right before, without much ado, before I introduce Mr. Bedrow, I would like to ask our town moderator is with us, Mr. Toomey, to just give us an overview of what town meeting is going to look like on April 12th. I did see you somewhere. Jim, are you? Oh, there you are. I think you're muted, though. Hold on a sec.
It's okay. I got him now. I didn't realize that was James.
There you go. Mr. Moderator.
You hear me now? Thank you. Thanks for doing this. I think this is a great opportunity to preview the town meeting and hopefully answer any questions in advance that might arise and have the opportunity to to move the meeting along. We're very aware that this is still, we're still not in normal times. We're dealing with the issues of COVID. The meeting, we've looked at the setup. We're going to do it in the gymnasium. Gymnasium is currently set up in order to allow physical distancing for these students. So we're going to be able to use that setup and maintain social distancing and be sure that we're complying with the COVID protocols and that we can conduct a safe and efficient meeting. We can accommodate the, what would the the normal high attendance at a annual town meeting? So we encourage folks to come. We want to let them know that they'll be safe. And at the same time, we will try and conduct the meeting expeditiously in order to get people in and out and not extend the amount of time we're together indoors. One quick thing, we will, you know, it's a relatively recent approach that we've used on the consent agenda here in Situate in the last, I think, three or four years. I just want to make it clear to people that this is a great way to expedite the routine matters that have to be approved by town meeting every year. But in no way is it intended to limit anyone's ability to address an issue, get answers to questions, or participate on any of those issues. So as we will explain at the meeting, as we go through the process of the consent agenda, if anyone feels that they do want to have specifically addressed any of the articles that are presented there, they are, all they have to do is ask that that item be held. It will be removed from the consent agenda. It will be an item for discussions. So while we want to expedite the meeting and move things along, we are very conscious of not denying anyone the ability to get information, participate, state their points of view, and encourage folks to do that. So with that, we'll look forward to seeing everybody on April 12th and be interested tonight if anyone has any indication as we go through the articles that there are questions, concerns, procedural issues, motions to amend. I know I have already received an email on Article 30 on some concerns, just if you'd give me a heads up. Or if you have questions in advance of the meeting, I have an email set up for the moderator, sitmod@gmail.com. And if folks want to get ahead, get to me ahead of the meeting with a question or any procedural issues, please do. Thanks, Karen.
Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Then I will be happily turn this over to Jim to give us the overview. And before he starts, I just want to note, we have, I think, pretty much every department head has jumped on one form or another on this call. So really appreciate you guys joining us and and hopefully we will go through it quickly so that we can all go back to our regular scheduled evening. So, Mr. Bedrow.
Evening. I'm going to share my screen. If that's okay.
Yep.
Just give me a second. I'll put the slide presentation up. So just, I know most people on here are familiar with the way municipal budgeting works. But just for people who don't, a fiscal year runs from July 1st to June 30th. We are currently in fiscal year 2021. We are discussing the fiscal year '22 budget, which starts July 1st of 2021. I know it gets confusing, but that's what we're talking about. In last year's budget, obviously, would be fiscal '20. So the preparation of the budget really starts with fiscal '20. How did we end up the previous fiscal year when we closed our books? Our free cash was almost 3.5 million, which is a little higher than normal. A lot of that was driven by departmental turnbacks when we put on a COVID hiring freeze, we put on a COVID spending freeze. So departments turned back quite a bit of funds from last year, which goes into our free cash. Our free cash, as you know, we use for capital items and things like that. Our receipts are up, our new growth was up. Receipts are anything that's not taxes, billing permits, things like that. We invested in our technology last year. We spent a lot of money on technology, water and sewer, and excuse me, forshore protection. We've started to receive some of our FEMA reimbursements that we've been chasing for years, and we maintained our AAA bond rating both in FY '20 and FY '22. Corona came, it hit in FY '20, started March 10th, 2020, which unbelievably is over a year ago. We postponed town meeting multiple times. We ended up having it outside, which was fantastic. Mr. Toomey did a great job in a unsure environment, and really, it was a really nice day. We lucked out on that. We had projected for fiscal year '21 a decrease in both state revenue and local revenue due to the uncertainties of what was going to happen with COVID. The state budget did not get voted until after our fall town meeting. So even though we did receive additional state aid from what we had projected, once we had that town meeting, that was unable to be spent. So that ended up going into our free cash, sorry, our stabilization fund. We are still not sure what's going to happen with the meals tax. The meals tax actually did much better in fiscal '20 than we expected, and it's doing better in fiscal '21 than we expected. It's still unclear what's going to happen with that. A lot of it's going to depend upon the weather when we go to outside dining. We are still waiting for reimbursement from the county, about 1.9 million that we have spent on COVID funds that we haven't gotten back yet. We need to get that back very, very quickly. And we're still waiting for the new normal. So every Monday, we do an update. Right now, we seem to be in kind of a static state with our numbers. This past week, a number of cases went up, but our percentage of cases went down. So more people were getting tested, but as a percentage, fewer of them actually had COVID. So the state numbers have gone down now two days in a row. That's a good sign. But both of us seem to be kind of stuck in a static where we're not going up significantly. We're not going down significantly, and I don't think that's going to change until really after the 19th of April, when everybody over the age of 16 or 18, depending upon the shot, will become eligible, and we start seeing large swaths of the entire population receiving vaccination. So far, year to date, we are doing pretty well. Our new growth was significantly higher than we projected. Our local receipts are on par with fiscal '20, which was mostly pre-pandemic. So we're doing well there. We are still facing COVID expenses. We are waiting right now for the new CARES Act that the federal government just passed to see, one, what type of revenue we're going to get from the federal government, and two, what we can actually spend it on. The guidance right now is very flimsy. So they have 60 days to make the first disbursement from the passage of the act. In between when the act passed and the disbursement, they're going to have to come up with some sort of guidance or regulation on how we can spend it. So we're waiting to see that. That will obviously be a help in this fiscal year and next fiscal year for any unanticipated COVID expenses. We continue to make forshore repairs. We continue to keep up with our capital. So fiscal '21, we're in pretty good shape, which then starts our fiscal year '22 assumptions. Taxes will go up by two and a half percent, which is what's allowed under Prop 2 and 1/2. Just for people at home, the two and a half percent has nothing to do with your own taxes or your house value. It has to do with the total levy that the town has and how much that can go up by. So if the town total tax levy is $100, that can go up two and a half percent. So I know we get calls every year from people saying their taxes were up 4%, 5%, but the two and a half only deals with the town's total levy and not individual taxpayers. The governor has already filed his house budget for next year. We have used his local aid number. It is significantly higher than what we used in fiscal '21. We've increased our local receipts slightly from last year, but still kept them below previous levels based upon the pandemic. Meals tax, we're forecasting at 75%. New growth is still projected to be high. Joe DeVito and his staff is doing a wonderful job going out and capturing our growth numbers. And we've met several times with the financial forecast to continue updating these figures so we can have what we believe is the most updated figures available for the town meeting when we have it in April. As you can see here, the biggest part of our revenue is the tax levy. 64 million out of our $100 million budget comes out of the tax levy. This is your average tax bill. And local receipts, the estimate versus the actual, you can see in every case, the actual is lower, is higher than the estimate. That's by design. It is designed to be conservative. It is designed to end with us having funds left over. We do not budget right up close to that line because that gives us no budget flexibility and provides us with no cushion if something unforeseen happens. So this is by design to be conservative. Between the financial forecast, myself and Nancy, we keep it this way, and it's a very good way to do your budgets for both the rating agencies and the state when they review how your spending is. I mean, the biggest challenge, obviously, is what is the long-term effect of the pandemic? We don't know. We're going to continue dealing with that. Health insurance costs, unemployment, things keep going up. We are negotiating new collective bargaining agreements. We have a couple done. Our unions are very good to work with on these things, but those costs are unsure at this point as we continue. The pandemic, we still have to deal with all of the COVID protocols, especially in cleaning in the buildings. That takes up a significant amount of time. Every time we have a small meeting in the meeting room here, our custodian has to go in afterwards and completely disinfect it. So it supplies its time, its equipment, and that will continue to impact as we go forward. We are lucky that we do not have any major winter storms this past winter. Don't want to jinx myself, but it was a fairly good winter from the winter storm. But we still need assistance from the state. We still have FEMA costs that we're chasing. Grants are becoming more and more competitive as we go along, as more and more cities and towns struggle. They get people into the grant business. We do very well. But again, they are more and more competitive. And obviously, like every other city in town, we have infrastructure needs that we have to keep up with and actually go back and make improvements to, and that will be a struggle as we go forward. So FY '22 operating budget, for the most part, it is a level services budget. Very few increases in what we are providing for current services. We are balanced without using free cash or any one-time revenues. We do have a new growth projection increase based on what Joe DeVito was saying. We put up our state aid to match what the governor has filed and amended to the '21 levels, which is what we ended up with last year. Again, the union contracts that we're working on. Right now, the budget on the town side of government has a new part-time position created for clerical support in the facilities department. There is no clerical support in the facilities department. They share with the highway department. We think with all the work that Kevin Kelly and his staff has, it is critical that they receive some support from a clerical position. So we are proposing a new position there. We are funding a new part-time position at the senior center. We don't have an actual title for that, but this will be the person responsible for the food services and the lunches that we are projecting to have once COVID ends when we open the new senior center. That'll eventually be partly offset with the charges for those services. But at this point, we are funding the position going forward. And then we've put new hours into custodial maintenance at the recreation of the new senior center. As we finish the new recreation, that's getting more and more use. The new senior center will also get more and more use. Plus, we have some uses in the old gates building. So it is imperative that we keep up with the maintenance and the cleaning of those buildings. So we are recommending additional 10 hours going to the custodial maintenance line, the staff at those buildings. These are your fixed costs. These are all part of the financial forecast. You see, employee pension went up significantly. Health insurance, we had originally projected at about an 8% increase. It came in, I think, right about half of that, a little less. You can see the big increase on here in terms of dollars is workers' compensation. We are self-funded for workers' compensation. Four out of the last five years, we've exceeded our appropriation, had to put money in. Our claim record right now is not good, so the cost of that has gone up. And we have a million-dollar liability limit. We only have $500 and change in our trust fund. So we need to put some extra money here, build back up the trust fund. And we know we do have one serious claim that may or may not go to a payout this year. We need to be prepared for that. So those are your fixed costs that show up on the financial forecast that are taken off the top before we spend any money on any other budgets. The highlights, again, we're maintaining services, we're maintaining program levels. No one is going out the door. There are no layoffs or reductions in force. We are meeting the operational challenges of the new buildings, particularly the senior center that will be coming online. We've increased our allocation for road and forshore improvements by $200,000 in the fiscal '22 budget. The capital budget continues to commit to water and sewer infrastructure improvements. We are continuing to support our coastal resource officer, and we are pursuing all the grant opportunities we possibly can to help address our needs and augment what the taxpayers of Situate are paying for their services. The capital plan is in Article 4. We can touch on that later. It was presented to the board on November 30th. We did make one change to it since then, and that was the addition of additional spending for the golf course project down at Widow's Walk. That has been approved by both the Board of Selectmen, the Advisory Board, and the Capital Budget Committee. So that will be in part of Article 4 for the capital for town meeting. And then we just continue to have the same obligations going forward. We still need to work on our water quality. We need to work on our water infrastructure and our sewer infrastructure, particularly the sewer expansion to North Situate. We've had some conversations with Cohasset lately that maybe we'll get that back on track in terms of the regional sewer project. Pensions and health insurance will continue to go up. We have our financial policies that we reviewed. Hopefully, we'll adopt those to work on getting a better bond rating, a AAA bond rating. Right now, the difference between AA plus and AAA in terms of interest rate is small because the interest rate is so low. But as interest rates go up, that delta will get higher and higher, and that will become a significant savings if we can make that jump to AAA in the future. And really, the the big thing going forward for the town, like all towns, is what is the new normal going to be going forward with COVID? What are the protocols we're going to have to continue to make? What about the PPE? And things like that. We just don't know at this point. At some point, the state and federal money to assist with those things will dry up, and we will have to capture those on our own and make sure that we are protecting our residents and our employees against any strains of COVID or any recurrence of COVID in the future. That's really what I have at this point. Try to keep it very high level. And at this point, Karen, however, you want to go through the budget and take questions, we happy to.
That's great. Thank you so much, Jim. Yeah, it's, it's always good to go through the 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 process and 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 all of the details. So I will now ask if anybody would like to use the reactions function on the bottom of your screen to raise hand, or if you want to just literally wave, we'll look at you by putting on your video. If you have any questions about the proposed budget, fiscal '22 budget, now's your opportunity. I know a lot of the folks on this call were instrumental in preparing it. So I will scroll through here. I don't see any questions. One thing I think that will, I just want to note, this is going to be, because this is recorded, and we're going to be sharing this for the next two weeks, I think that having folks have that Jim's presentation at their leisure will really be informative for the community. So Jim, you must have done an amazing job because I don't see a single hand raised. So that will bring us to to a discussion of the other articles. So Jim, I don't know, I don't know if we have any slides prepared for that, but do you want to walk through the consent agenda, what the purpose is and what you're, we're going to be proposing for town meeting?
Which Jim are you speaking of?
I speak to you, Mr. Bedrow. Sorry.
That's fine. So the consent agenda, as Moderator Toomey pointed out, is a way that we can take some of those routine articles that pop up all the time, generally not controversial. Consider them as one, move them along, and then get to the real business that Tom Eady wants to talk about. Anything that's in the consent agenda or in the proposed consent agenda, any member of Tom Eady can object to, it comes out of the consent agenda and goes right back onto the to-be-debated list. So right now, proposed, and the board will have to make this decision, obviously, next week, for the consent agenda, Article 1, compensation of elected officials. Article 2, reports of boards and committees. Article 5, Waterways Enterprise. Article 6, Golf Course Enterprise. Article 7, Wastewater Enterprise. Article 8, Transfer Station Enterprise. Article 9, Water Enterprise. Article 10, Stabilization Fund Access Levy. Article 11, Revolving Fund Limits. Article 13, Community Preservation Act Reconciliations. This is not the actual vote on the Community Preservation Fund, but this is recollection, reconciliations from all the articles in the past that were either closing out or moving around. Article 15, the Mass General Act Chapter 91 Liability. Article 16, 17, which are for local options acceptance for tax deferrals from veterans. Article 17 is a deferral and recovery agreement for benefits. And that's what we have right now on the consent agenda. So.
Okay. Are there any, did anyone want to call out, I have a question on those proposed for the consent agenda? I do see a raised hand. Our Mr. Moderator, would you like to join us?
You're muted, Jim.
Oh, sorry. I think I just.
You unmuted and then re-muted.
Yeah, that was my fault. Try again. I'll keep my hands to myself there.
Okay, so, hear me now.
Yes, Mr. Moderator.
I looked at the Article 21, which was road acceptance, and Article 22, which is just setting up the revolving fund for the senior center. I didn't, I thought those were really routine. I didn't know if those might be added to the consent agenda, unless there's some issues there. Again, the consent agenda, if someone does have an issue, they can remove it. So I was just thought those might be appropriate to be.
Yeah, I mean, it can be added in. Generally, they're not routine, regular articles that happen every year, which is why we didn't put them in. But I don't believe that there's a whole lot of discussion or controversy in either one of those articles. I think they could both be put in the consent agenda if the board so chooses.
Okay. Yeah, so we, the board, the select board will be meeting next Tuesday, April 6th, to finalize what will vote and finalize that agenda. Correct, Jim?
You'll have the consent agenda before you next week for your consideration. Correct.
Thank you.
So I think at this point, Nancy, why don't we add those to the proposed list in the book and discuss it next week?
Okay. Mr. Kelly?
Thank you.
Jim, are there any of the articles in special town meeting that will be on a consent agenda?
There's only four articles there. Jerry, we can't cross town meetings with things in the stuff in the special being voted in the annual. So where there's only four articles, you really wouldn't have a consent agenda. They just blast through the four articles.
Thank you.
Are there any other hands raised or questions about the consent agenda proposal for town meeting? All right. Chief Murphy's shaking his head, so I think we're ready to go on. So that, then that leaves, how many are then left on the agenda after the budget and the consent are?
So a rough count, if we have those other two, I think that'll put 16 in the consent agenda and leave 14 out.
Okay. Do you want to run through those quickly, or do, how do you want to?
I would think if you want to go through articles, Madam Chair, we might want to just start with the special and then work through the annual.
Okay. All right. I, of course, have lost my screen. So do you want to start with the special while I try to find-
Well, the special town meeting has four articles on it right now. The first one is unpaid bills from a prior fiscal year of $4,200 and change. These are just bills that come in after the close of the books in July. All bills must be submitted within two weeks of the close of the fiscal year. If they're not submitted in a timely manner, then it requires town meeting approval to pay those. So these are bills that came in late and are due to be paid by the town.
Okay.
Article 2 is budget reconciliations. These are squaring up of budgets in the current fiscal year, moving money around from different departments or from free cash. There's $278,000 proposed in that. $8,000 for the Board of Health. Highway capital is about $105,000. That's we place a truck that the frame cracked and broke on, and we need to replace it. It was too late for the capital and it wouldn't go on the capital, so we had to do it through budget reconciliations. Transfer station, the transfer station, we're just hauling way more trash this year than we have. So our hauling costs were up significantly. Water capital, and this is to replace a utility truck that got totaled. Someone hit it on the highway. It does not have full replacement value, so we need to appropriate some money in this to replace that truck. And then some Widow's Walk Technical Services, just some small money for Widow's Walk to do a couple of small capital projects. Article 3 is anticipated COVID costs. We have $100,000 plugged in there. It's really a guesstimate at this place, point, depending upon how fast the county gets going and starts getting us our reimbursement. But we do need to close out those accounts, some of them anyway. So Nancy and I both felt it was prudent for us to put some money in there so we can start covering some departments if they start running low based on the county not reimbursing us in a timely manner. And Article 4 is just reconciling set-asides for community preservation. We have to set aside 10% in each fund. And then based upon what the state ends up giving us for a final payment for community preservation, we have to go back and put additional money in some of those funds just to make sure they get the 10%. So that covers the special town meeting at this point.
Great. I have found the list of the other articles. I'm going to try to share a screen. Turn this up as we go here. Hold on. Just so that we can have a visual. I don't think that worked. Did it? How's that? Does it work? Okay. Okay. So of these, Jim, which ones are, I know most of the first ones are either the budget or in the consent.
So the only two on the screen in front of me right now that would not be in the consent agenda right now would be Article 3, Article 4, and Article 12.
Okay.
Article 14, sorry.
Correct. Okay, so the capital improvement plan. Do you want to, I know that the chair is on this call. Do you want to give the highlight or should we ask Mr. Garcia?
Well, I mean, the highlight really is we are continuing to spend significant amounts of money in our water and sewer infrastructure. They are still the two biggest expenses on the capital budget. I believe the capital budget, Nancy, please chime in if I'm wrong, is just over $15 million recommended for this year. And about 12 of that is water and sewer. So we are still being very aggressive in our water and sewer to get those up to snuff and make sure we don't have any issues with those. We're also still doing as much equipment as we can and also making an investment in our buildings. If the board remembers, we did a facilities master plan and a facilities review. The first year of the facilities view was about $1 million in spending across all departments and all buildings. And we've put that $1 million into the capital budget for next year to do the first year of that facility study.
Let's pause there and see. Are there any questions about what, I will also just interject the, Mr. Kelly, I believe, is the advisory booklet online yet? It should be soon if it's not.
Nancy's nodding that it is.
Yes.
It's online. It has already been posted. So-
Distributed via Facebook Blast and a website.
Terrific. Okay, so anybody that's listening to this video and hasn't looked for it, the detail and the backup for all of these articles are online with the advisory booklet, which, of course, you will receive when you arrive at town meeting. So with that, are there any questions about the cap, proposed capital budget? Or, or the process? Not seeing any hands. So I believe the next is a community preservation, Jim?
The next would be Article 4, which is the operating budget. We had touched on the highlights of that. There is a Jen with a, with a hand up, Karen.
Oh, okay. Sorry, Jen. Let me ask.
Hi, Jennifer Kuhn, can you hear me?
Hi, Jen. Yes, thanks for joining us. What was your question?
I'm looking for the minutes for the capital planning meetings. There's no minutes online.
Mr. Garcia, do you know if they have been approved by your committee? See. I don't know if he's, in theory, he's here.
So I'm looking at the top under the agendas and minutes. The last ones I see are from 2018.
Oh, okay. Well. Mr. Garcia, do you know the status of your posting of minutes?
No, I don't have a good solid answer for that.
Okay. Well, we'll revisit that for sure.
Yep. Also, we also need members for the capital budget committee. They are down members. I know Mr. Toomey has been looking for them, but I think we're going to have a hard time even approving the minutes right now because I think all Chris has is a quorum of members available. So we need two or three, Chris, you know?
Right now, two. After this season, it will be three.
Okay. Mr. Garcia, do you want to inform folks about, do you, I don't know if you have it in front of you. Do you know if there was general consensus on the approved, on the recommended budget for capital? Or did you have any issues in particular that were?
No, there were, there were no issues from us. It was all pretty much housekeeping things this year. Nothing outstanding. So no, it sailed right through unanimously.
Okay, great. Hopefully, that addresses concerns about the deliberations. Are there any other questions or comments about the capital? Okay. Yeah, and by miss a hand, please, somebody just shout out. So operating budget, Jimmy, we were saying we did the highlights already.
So we did the highlights of the operating budget. I think the operating budget is not including enterprise accounts over $86 million. We hit on where on the town side the increases would be in terms of staff. I think the other increase that people will see that might jump out at them is in the billing department. We're seeing a significant increase in the cost of our inspectors because the inspectors get paid per inspection. The number of inspections are way up, so you'll see that that line has increased on the building. But that is really a pass-through because we charge for those inspections. They commit as a revenue, and they go out as a payment to the inspector. So that's the other one I think that jumps out as me as being, you know, what is that increase aside from the ones that I've already talked about in my earlier presentation?
Good, great. Are there any questions about the operating budget as proposed for town meeting? All right. Lyndon, that's just your pen up, not a hand. Great. Then the next, I believe, is community, community preservation?
Yeah, Article 14, the community preservation. Mr. Fennelly is on. I'm not sure if he wants to talk about that or he wants me to. Article 12, sorry, is community preservation.
Yeah. Mr. Fennelly, do you want to just give an overview of what will be before, folks? Are you, I think you're here somewhere.
I am here.
There you are, right in the middle of my screen. Hi, Dan.
I'm here. So you want me to go through each one?
Um, yeah, so how many, what's the total? There's five, is it? No.
Yeah, I believe that's correct. I have to pull up the list here. Hold on.
We're putting people on the spot because this is a meeting we haven't-
No problem at all. Yes, we have the normal, you know, 10% reserves that we have to, by law, do. We also had $300,000, I'm sorry, $334,764, which is to pay down the debt relevant to the athletic field that we did two years ago. $100,000 for emergency rental assistance for COVID victims. That's done through the community housing. We have a small project for bench replacement at Cedar Point, which is needed because the benches are falling apart, basically. So this is to provide two benches that are similar to the ones that are over at the, at the lighthouse today. We also have a project that was sponsored by the, I'm sorry, the, it's a recreation project, but sponsored by the Conservation Commission for additional funding for trail, trail parking and access to some of the trails that we had and some of the properties that we had previously purchased. And the volunteers put trails in there. So this is to finish that project. It's another $30,000 that's needed due to some unanticipated costs. There was a request from, excuse me, the Goulding family to build a, what they call a library green space behind the library to basically put a patio and some seating out there. That would be a nice place for people to come and sit and read or just hang out there, if you will, and be able to enjoy the, the space behind the library between the Central Park and the library. And that's a $100,000 project. The total cost of the project is about $113,000. And a lot of that is done through funding that the Goulding family is putting up as well as some donations that Northern Oak Landscaping is providing to do the landscaping there. And then the last project we have on the warrant is $77,660 for a design and permitting of two pedestrian bridges and a path that's down in the, in the Driftway down by Green Bush that will make a circular hiking path across the existing berm that's there right now, which you really can't walk across because it goes through two streams there. So it's to build two bridges there and revet the path there. And this is for, just for the design and the permitting for that. I think it's a conservative estimate based on the information we have, we've already gotten, and the estimated construction cost for the whole project, which the Conservation Commission will be coming back for at a future date, is estimated to be about $250,000 to $300,000. And that's to join a circular path, if you will, from, I'll call it where Dunkin' Donuts parking lot is across the berm through existing pathways, down the Driftway and back to Dunkin' Donuts. I'm excited about this because it's one of the first projects that we've sponsored in the Green Bush neighborhood, and we have had several requests from people in that neighborhood for projects that we just haven't been able to fund for a variety of reasons. Everything from paths and, and sidewalks to trying to put a park in down there. So I think this might be the first project for recreation that we're putting in the Green Bush neighborhood. And that's, those are the projects.
Great. Thank you, Chair Fennelly. Very exciting projects. I will open it up. Are there any questions or comments about the proposed CPC fundings that would be for town meeting? Any hands raised? Any people jumping up and down? Great job, Dan. I don't see any. Okay, so Jim, then 14 is VOTEC on the consent or is that separate?
That is on the consent. That is on the regular agenda. Article 14 is an authorization of debt for South Shore VOTEC. I think the total amount authorized is around almost $19 million. They will not be issuing $19 million worth of debt. They're going to do this project, projects in pieces. I know Superintendent Hickey is on. I don't know if he wants to add anything, but it has to take, I believe it takes a unanimous vote of all the communities in the South Shore VOTEC district in order to pass a bar for VOTEC. But they haven't done any major capital projects in years. The building does need some work. They do a nice job of taking care of it, but they do have projects coming up, a roof and some other things that they'll need authorization to borrow for.
Superintendent, would you like to add anything?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jim did a great job. It's its share of this is 7%, and we wouldn't start any projects until fiscal '23. As he indicated, we would phase them in.
Okay, great. And Jim, you noted this is in the consent?
It is not in the consent.
It is not in the consent.
In one article.
Great. Okay, well, we'll see you in two weeks then. Great. I'm going to attempt to share the screen for the second page of the articles, Jim, so you can highlight which on that. Here we go. Yes?
So Article 15, 16, 17, and 18 are all proposed to be in the consent agenda, which Article 19 would be the next one. Cowings Cove is off Summer Street in Norwell. It's a small subdivision. There's a piece of property in there that leads into a larger piece in Situate. It'll bust our water supply. It is important to the water department. If we didn't need town meeting approval, we would have just purchased it because the purchase price is only $5,200 and change. It is from the Maxwell Trust. I believe it's 14-plus acres. They are basically closing themselves out, and they would like to give this property to the town. They had about $5,200 in expenses to get the property all set from a legal standpoint, and they basically want us to reimburse them the $5,200 as the purchase price to take possession of this property.
Great. Thank you. Are there any questions about Article 19, the acquisition of Cowings Cove? And since I have my screen saved, I'm relying on somebody else to tell me if they see a hand raised. Okay. That'll be nice to conclude if the town meeting approves it. That's been a long time coming. What else? Okay, so that's 19.
Article 20, I believe there are no more articles. Well, actually, two more would be in there at the suggestion of the moderator. Article 20 is a land acquisition on Chief Justice Cushing Highway. This piece of property basically starts at the top of the hill from the town hall on Chief Justice Cushing Highway heading south. I believe that's Old Forge. It goes from Old Forge down the hill to the property right next to the reservoir. The cost for this property is $1.35 million. The town would be buying this for municipal purposes, as we talked about on the board vote of this article. When I got here, I spent probably two or three months looking at property for the Ellis property. We had to find land equal to what we took out of Conservation for the Public Safety Building. And really, the town does not own a whole lot of land that is unencumbered for some other purpose. So the town, the suggestion would be that the board buy this for municipal purposes, and then we could take our time to see what we wanted to do with it. As the board is aware, we are seeing right now multiple 40Bs coming before the town. There were people looking at this land for a 40B. So buying it for municipal purposes, we may have uses for it. We believe we do. That'll allow us to protect it while we take our time to decide what the best use of that property would be.
Great. Thank you, Jim. Are there any questions or comments about Article 20, the land acquisitions on Chief Cushing? I can never do that. Chief Justice Cushing Highway. Anyone see any hands?
No hands, no hands.
No hands. Oh, thank you, man behind the curtain. Okay, great. Then we'll move on. Is Dear Common, has been proposed in this consent?
Yep.
Okay.
And what's- Article 21 and 22 have both been proposed in the consent by the moderator, which would bring us Article 23, which is the waterways. Really just some technical changes to the waterways by law, rules and regulations. Not a whole lot of new stuff in there. I think the biggest change is that the town would take possession of three moorings and use those moorings for transient voters. And the town would control those, but for the most part, they're mostly technical changes to the off- And the town would control those, but for the most part, they're mostly technical changes to the operations of the marina.
Hi. Article twenty-three, Waterways. Are there any questions or comments about that?
There are none.
There are none. Thank you, Steph. Jane, Pedro. What's next? I'm sorry.
Article twenty-four is the general bylaw amendment, the water conservation. I know the Chair of Water, the Water Resource Committee, Becky Marmot is on. So I would defer to Becky to give us an update on this, just so I don't get it wrong.
Becky, are you available? This is an amendment I know our Water Resources Committee has been working a long time, very hard on. That, I don't see.
She, she is there. Becky?
Can I?
Yep.
So this by law changes, is proposing a change to the current water conservation by law. The current by law simply authorizes the select board to implement water use restrictions and it states the current fines. What we have done is we propose that we take all of the other elements of the outdoor water use restrictions and put it into the by law as opposed to right now they currently live in a whole host of places. So basically, basically just restates, as I mentioned, the outdoor water use restrictions that we have, which include start May first and September thirtieth. And then we have different levels of the restrictions based on usage and droughts. So the things that are different is that we're proposing the addition of tiers. Right now, we just kind of state the four different restrictions, levels of water use restrictions, adding tiers, tier one, tier two, tier three and tier four to make it a little bit easier to understand when we change the regulations. We're also increasing the fines for those who violate the by law. We are specifying that no new irrigation systems can hook up to town water, which isn't new, but it's new per by law. And we're also requiring registration for all in-ground irrigation systems.
Great. As you point out, this was, there's, there was a lot of discussion about putting it all in one place. So people were very clear about what was expected and what was needed. So thank you for putting all that together. I'm gonna, let's see, you know what? I'm gonna stop sharing because I, for my own self, because I can't see anybody.
You have one question to Scott Greenbaum.
Okay, great. Thank you. Scott? Can we unmute Mr. Greenbaum?
He should be good now.
Okay. Mr. Greenbaum?
Oh, all right. Add a quick question. I read that by law and unclear. We have a lot of people in the Sand Hills area that are putting in automatic sprinkler systems on their hose beds. And then running them that way. And I read the by law and it was unclear to me whether that, the by law change actually would disallow that since it's an automatic sprinkler system. Or if they've actually gone through a process of determining whether that would be a violation of the new rules of the proposed rules that they get approved.
Just not.
What was the method they were using to connect it?
So they put it on their hose bib, leave their hoses out, their sprinklers out, and every night at two o'clock in the morning. They have the automatic sprinkler. It goes. You walk around at five o'clock in the morning and there's a puddle in there. So would that be considered a new sprinkler system? It's not in ground. It's above ground, but it's.
No, I think Scott, Mr. Greenbaum, I mean, Becky, correct me if I'm wrong. I think what you're, you're describing is more a violation of, of the, of, you know, if they're, depending on the tier, you're not supposed to be watering your lawn. It doesn't matter how you're doing it. Is that correct?
It has to be handheld.
Yeah.
It has to be handheld, but this is not handheld. This is a permanent installation. And by time the water department gets around to look at six o'clock in the morning, it's dried up. So they, I mean.
Scott, take a picture.
All their neighbors have.
I think, as their DPW Director Cafferty is saying, is that's an enforcement issue depending on what tier we're in and, you know, obviously our, our folks aren't driving around all night. So sometimes it just takes being aware of it so that we can address it. So unfortunately, they can't.
I guess we'd have to look at it and see if it meets the definition of irrigation system.
Yeah.
Because irrigation, new irrigation systems are prohibited. So if we think it meets that definition, then I would say technically it would come under this and would be able to say no. I really have to take a good look at what the definition of irrigation system is.
That's what, I mean, I read the thing. That's why I just asked the question. It was something that I wasn't sure whether that was designed specifically to address that issue.
Appreciate it. Thank you for bringing it up because the entire, the intent is to make sure the conservation is done correctly and this by law brings it in one place to make it clear. So we will revisit that, Ms. Marmot. But yeah. Any other questions about the proposed by law for water, water, water conservation?
There are any. You should be.
Mr. Kelly has his physical hand raised.
I would just like to thank Becky. You did a great job on this. So thank you very much for doing it.
Long time, a lot of, lot of late nights. Okay, so we've done waterways and I, or water conservation. And then there are three zoning bylaws. All of them are not on consent, I believe.
Right.
So the first is Amendment number twenty-five, which is the North Situate Village Center and Neighborhood District and some housekeeping. I did see, I think, the entire planning team here. Are you still with us? Oh, there you are. Karen, do you want to just give the overview?
The changes for North Situate, the changes to the zoning map and the zoning by law will allow for development in North Situate area to follow new zoning that will replace the existing village business overlay district and the business district. The new zoning has two sub-districts that will promote traditional development patterns and allow for mixed use, multi-family housing, quality open spaces, complete streets and pedestrian enhancements. Zoning is based on the Green Bush Driftway Village Center Neighborhood District and the North Situate Vision Plan. It included a series of public meetings that the Economic Development Commission and the Planning Board had. The existing zoning districts for the overlay districts for water supply and environmental protection will be maintained. Zoning also incorporates provisions from chapter three fifty-eight of the Acts of twenty twenty. And that is adding by right fifteen units per acre for multi-family housing within half mile of an MBTA station. And that enables, that will enable the town to still receive and apply, or apply for Mass Works Grants and some other grants. We were able to add that into the by law at this point in time because we, we had of the way the legal ad was worded, it was generic enough that we could do it. So that's a good thing for the town. This article is going to require a two-thirds vote.
Thank you, Karen. And it was obviously presented by our planning board and your director is sitting next to you. And did you want to add anything? Are we good?
The other thing I would say is this, these changes have been in the works now for at least a half dozen years. There have been a number of meetings. The stakeholders have been involved. And basically it's to make sure that the, the zoning articles, the housekeeping, et cetera, are in place for women, if sewer ever comes to North Situate, that we don't have a free for all, that the design standards are in place and things happen in an orderly fashion, the way we want them to.
Terrific. Thank you, Chair Burbine. Are there any questions or comments about the proposed by law changes for the North Situate Overlay District? And scrolling, I see none, which would bring us to the next Article twenty-six, the zoning by law for signs. Mr., do we still, is Mr. Pedro still on one of my squares?
He is still there. He just turned his video off.
Turned his video off. Karen?
All right, so the reason for replacing the existing by law is that our current by law is unconstitutional and illegal with respect to current case law, Reed versus Gilbert, as it regulates sign content. You're not allowed to regulate content of signs. What can be regulated is size, dimensions, location, placement, number of signs per lot, temporary signs, length of time. And it takes into account public health, safety and welfare and aesthetics. The amendment to the current by law includes that it's reorganized to make easier to use. It has definitions, prohibited signs, temporary signs, maintenance of signs. The building commissioner is the enforcing agent. Temporary signs have a sixty-day time period and are exempt from permitting with four per lot. Signs cannot be on town property. They cannot obstruct visibility. They must be on private property, a minimum of ten feet from the edge of the pavement or street or sidewalk. And that's to protect public health, safety and welfare.
Great. Thank you so much, Ms. Joseph. I see Mr. Hunneman has his hand up. Lincoln? Oh, wait. There you go.
Thanks. We don't need, obviously, we don't want to debate it now, but I, I just want to point out that the Advisory Committee did vote eight to zero, eight, excuse me, eight to one, not in favor of this for the same reasons. It's been not in favor of it for now. I think the third time that this has come around. Primarily, I won't get into the reasons, but just FYI for folks, obviously, this is going to be a a point of discussion at town meeting. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunneman. Mr. Moderator will duly note that, I'm sure. Are there other, this was supported by the board.
Ms. Canfield, may I say something, please?
Yes, you may, Ms. Burbine.
I think the Advisory Board needs to understand while this by law change is not perfect, not too many are. However, we did in fact hire a consultant who went through this. Secondly, it was vetted by town council. And finally, there was a public meeting, hearing. And none of the advisory board showed up. So I find what their disagreement here is somewhat disingenuous. And you can rest assured there will be some discussion at town meeting. But just to let you know, we did our due diligence from the planning board side of this.
Thank you, Ms. Burbine. I'm certain Mr. Gilmore wants to chime in.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. The due diligence that was done was incorrect and was not appropriate. There was no meeting with the planning. We've been through this zoning by law three times. Common sense is not involved in, in, in the professionals that say this, this document can go forward. Common sense like a sign has to be placed ten feet from the pavement, when your mailbox, when, when telephone poles, when there's walls, stone walls, which the town is full of, and nobody has the common sense to understand a more logical placement language that should have been involved here. Also, the duration of the sixty days and having to take a sign down when you've won the primary or whatever, if it's a political sign, you've won the primary. Why should you have to take your sign down after that without having to go through the hassle of seeking a individual waiver? We've asked for common sense. We've asked for you all to come and talk to us and we see no reason why these common sense, just those two items alone could not really improve this document to a level of perfection that would be reasonably acceptable to most common people. That's my comment. And I'm sure it'll come up in the, in the meeting.
I was just gonna say.
Common sense.
Thank you, Mr. Gilmore. I, you, you're absolutely right that the time for that debate will be on town meeting floor because that's when the body of our.
Madam Chairman, I might also add the night of the public meeting
Yep.
happened on a night where we had to have a meeting. So we were not.
Excuse me, sir. If I can correct you, we put our public hearing earlier than your meeting so that you guys could attend.
But we had no choice in that meeting. We had no choice in that.
Not a debate, folks.
So let me interject. The purpose of this meeting tonight is to inform the public about what will be available for debate at town meeting in two weeks. That's a little taste of how important it is to come to town meeting because everything that we vote on matters to the town. So obviously, in this particular matter, there's a difference of opinion. So I look forward to the town meeting debate on this and thank you for your input on it tonight. And with that, and there's no other hands raised on on the signed by law, we will go on to Article twenty-seven, which is the fair housing.
I'm sorry, Ms. Canfield, there is a hand raised.
I'm sorry, Mr. Westhorpe?
Yeah, I just, Jamie doesn't speak for the full advisory, just so we're clear. He was talking, there were certain people that voted for it and against it. So that wasn't, you know, I just want to make sure.
Okay, well, thank, duly noted, Mr. Vice Chair. And that is when, as everyone recalls, everyone, this call probably knows, when we bring that article before town meeting, we will announce the vote of each board and who is supported and who is not. And there'll be an opportunity for pros and cons. So duly noted, sir. Any other? Oh, Jamie, we're not debating.
I don't intend to debate. I do not speak for the entire board. The vote speaks for the entire board. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay. So anyone who has any doubt that it's not interesting being on a town board, now's your time to start volunteering. So Article two, I'm going to move on to Article twenty-seven, Fair Housing and Affordability Standards, section seven fifty-four. Karen, do you want to summarize?
Yeah, the proposed by law change would apply to all housing developments generating six units in all districts with five or fewer dwelling units exempt from the requirement. Land under common ownership could also not be segmented to avoid this requirement. We're just trying to expand what's included to have affordable units. Both the two thousand and fifteen and two thousand and twenty state-accepted housing production plans recommend this type of inclusionary zoning for the town to increase the number of affordable units. The town is currently at five point one for the subsized housing inventory where the state mandates ten percent. So we're just trying to find a way to be able to get more affordable units that aren't put through the fortyB process.
Perfect. All right. Thank you, Ms. Joseph. Are there any questions or comments about Article twenty-seven concerning fair housing? And I'm scrolling, I see none. All right. Well done. Thank you planning and planning board and for the planning department. Jim, I think that leaves just Article thirty or the, is not on consent. Oh, you're muted, Jim. Jim, as much as I enjoy this, you're still muted. Nope, still muted. Hold on. There you are.
Twenty-eight is a grant of easement on First Parish Road. So this involves the senior center and three thirty-seven First Parish Road. When you look at the senior center from First Parish, the house immediately to the right is three thirty-seven First Parish. And you'll see the fence between the two properties. That is not the property line. The property line actually follows the stone wall down about another twenty feet towards three thirty-seven First Parish. As part of our discussions with those residents about the senior center and a suit that they filed, the board had agreed that we would grant them an easement to use that twenty feet back to even with the house. So this is a small grant of easement that will allow them to do some work if they so choose. They would have to get approval from the town to do that work. But this is part of the settlement agreement that we reached with the residents of three twenty-seven First Parish.
Great. Are there any questions about that article or the proposal? I see one hand raised. Mr. Westhorpe?
Quick question. Does the easement go with the sale of a house? If they sell it, does it stay with it?
If it's recorded on the deed, the town would have to take the easement away.
But if they went to sell it, you could take it away or?
We would have to take the easement back with the same provisions that we gave it. So the answer to the question is yes, it runs with the house.
Okay.
Thank you for that. Any other questions about the proposed easement and article? Okay. Seeing other questions, the release of easement on Gardner?
So this is on Gardner Road. When Gardner Road was being laid out and constructed, the town was granted a twenty-foot wide drainage easement on what became twenty. the town was granted a twenty-foot wide drainage easement on what became twenty-six Gardner Road. When the drainage was actually put in, it was installed on thirty-two Gardner Road. So we were draining on a place where we had no easement. The owner of that property came to us to point that out to us and asked that we do some work. Basically, we piped that drainage a little further back on his property. And in return, he would give us a grant of easement for where we were draining, but he also wanted us to release the easement on the neighbor's property. Normally, we wouldn't do that, but the amount of time, effort and money it would have taken to take the drainage and put it on the correct easement, it just wasn't worth it. We did the work we had to do. The DPW crew did it in-house. And as part of that, we're going to release the easement on the property next door and accept the easement on the correct property on thirty-two.
Alrighty, well, the fun of municipal government. Is any questions about correcting that even in that article? If you had any doubt that the town meeting was fully democratic, that article will convince you. All right. So that, I don't see any questions on that. Thank you, Jim. That does leave us to the last article, which is a citizen's petition. And I'm happy to say that the, the petitioner has been able to join us. I know she's juggling a lot tonight, but Ms. Burke, would you like to just give an outline about your proposal? And I, let me unmute you. Let's see.
She should be able to do it herself. She should be good.
Thank you. So the petition is to create, to have the town, vote to have the town create a rebate program to replace all non-conforming fixtures to fixtures that are conforming and conforming will be anything that falls under the water sense standards. That's was, is EPA water sense standard. So EPA standards for water sense are more strict than the federal standards of fixtures that can be made, but they're less strict than other mandates or rebates that are being offered in other cities across the country. And the second part is a mandate program that was going to have dates by which every residential, commercial, multifamily and municipal building would have to replace their fixtures by. The mandate also included building upgrades and if fixtures were to break, to have them be replaced. I don't know if I, Karen, at this point, do I talk about planning to? I think we're planning to be, to adjust it. I, I do have to speak to the moderator writing mail today about moving the mandate portion of it, but I don't know if I'd talk about that right now.
So, well, I mean, we can let folks know that it, it sounds like you're intending to amend the article on the floor. So the way just, Mr. Moderator, would you like to just walk through why, you know, why it can't be withdrawn and redone before town meeting, why it has to be done by the floor? Would you like to explain that process? Wait, you got unmuted. There you go.
Yes, yeah. Once, once an article is on the warrant, it is placed before the town meeting and therefore the town meeting has to take any action, either to no action or to do amended action. So Ms. Green did the email me today and said she wanted to discuss an amendment, which I told her I'd try and connect with her toward the end of the week and we could go over the process and the substance of it to have it all lined up so we can do that efficiently at the town meeting.
Okay, so, so Ms. Burke on this one, would you like to just, I, I think it would be appropriate because we're gonna, you know, hopefully this, this recording will get shared within town so people are informed, and I think it'd be a great opportunity and for people to inform. You would like to just outline what you think your amendment will look like and we can debate it, obviously, on town meeting. Is any objection to that? Nope, Jim's not, I'm jumping up and down, so I will. Do you have, are you prepared to do that? Let's me ask you that first.
Yeah, so it's actually, it's simple, but it's not. But basically, I will be planning to amend, to remove the mandates for residential, commercial and multifamily mandates.
Okay, great. All right. So we will look forward to that amendment on town floor. Yeah, any, anything you can do to inform folks ahead of time, I'm sure will be useful. And I will open it up. I know you've got a hundred things to do tonight, too, as we all do. Are there any questions about Article thirty, is it thirty? Which is a citizen's petition? All right. Mr. Vignani, I see your hand.
Yeah, just one quick question. Stephanie, is the only component of your article going to be the rebate one? Is that the only thing that's going to be staying?
No, I do. I do want, we'll plan to keep the municipal and town building mandates that if fixtures are to be replaced, if they are replaced with water sense fixtures.
For municipal buildings.
For municipal buildings.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Great. Any other questions while you have, Ms. Burke? I don't see me. Okay. Well, that concludes a review of the entire town meeting, special town meeting warrant articles. I appreciate everyone's time and, and consideration for this. I hope when you see this posted on community television Facebook page, you share it so that as many residents are aware of what is going to be asked of them to consider on the twelfth. With that, if there are no other questions or comments, we will need to move officially to adjourn this meeting. Mr. Kelly?
Karen, just as a procedural matter, the Advisory Committee, while their meeting is unadjourned, needs to vote on the meeting minutes of our last meeting of March eleventh. So I, I apologize, but this is the only time that we can do it. So do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the Advisory Committee meeting of March eleventh, two thousand and twenty-one? So moved. Okay, moved by Jamie. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Dan McGuigan, thank you. I'll take the roll call. Linda McGuigan, pardon me, Linda Ferguson.
I got married. Yes.
Patrice Metro.
Yes.
Mike Westhorpe.
Yes.
Jamie Gilmore.
Aye.
Dan McGuigan.
Aye.
Lincoln Heineman.
Yes.
And Jerry Kelly, aye. Let the record show that Missy Seidel and Elise Russo were not present. So now I would support adjournment.
Why don't you adjourn your board first?
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn the Advisory Committee meeting tonight? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have to do a roll call. This time Linda Ferguson.
Yes.
Patrice Metro.
Yes.
Mike Westhorpe.
Yes.
Jamie Gilmore.
Aye.
Dan McGuigan.
Aye.
Lincoln Heineman.
Yes.
Yuri Kelly, aye. I declare unanimous, we are adjourned.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Then for the Select Board, I'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn as well. Moved, moved by Ms. Connolly, second by Ms. Kern. Is there any further discussion on adjournment? Only thing I will say is thank you, everyone, for participating in this. It is very useful public service and we so appreciate it, and we will see you in two weeks. Now I'll do a roll call for adjournment.
Ms. Canfield.
Yes.
Mr. Vignani.
Yes.
Ms. Connolly.
Yes.
Ms. Karen.
Yes.
And Mr. Goodrich, if he's here.
Not here, so we are officially adjourned and, thank you again, everyone, and enjoy the rest of the sunshiny day. Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Bye, everybody.
Thank you very much.